All right, so can we move to, um...
Unanticipated agenda.
Waste water.
Yeah, we have another unanticipated agenda here.
Which is a letter we received.
We are in deep duty.
From the...
No, no, it's not.
To be very official.
You got any contacts up there?
We received a letter from the Board of Selectmen from the town of Orleans relative to these MEP scientific data that the towns, many of the towns, are using as the basis for their waste water planning. This is the letter we received on June 7th, which was just two days ago. Therefore, it was not on the agenda, but the importance of it supposes that we would discuss this today. And we have Andy Gottlieb with us, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Waste Water Collaborative. And Gussie McGusakus is also our member to the... So, Andrew.
Gussie coming up too?
Yeah. Have a seat. I'm assuming that you have already read the letter.
I've seen the letter.
Actually, should identify Gussie as being on.
I did.
She did.
I just did, yeah. Believe it or not, I finally did something.
Okay. So, I might defer to Gussie on some of the history on this, but the, you know, request from Orleans is to have National Academy of Sciences do a peer review of the linked model used by UMass to come up with the loading estimates that the towns use in their waste water plan and that the state and the federal agencies have been using in their development of the total maximum daily loads and the regulatory obligations for nitrogen reduction. And I guess, you know, my opinion on it is that this has settled law already. The agencies have done their reviews of the methodology. They did it in advance in deciding to proceed with UMass as the contractor on this project. They have used the output of those technical studies and those models in administrative actions ranging from establishment of total maximum daily loads on and off Cape, as well as the issuance of and development of permit limits in Falmouth and then in Plymouth at a minimum. All of those actions have been subject to public review, public comment, public scrutiny. So, any issues that, technical legitimate issues that people had during the public hearing process in those TMDLs or the permits would have been an appropriate place for those concerns about the modeling technology and its appropriateness for setting regulatory standards. Those would have been the time for that to happen. The permits that have been issued using that technical approach have been litigated and found and upheld through the litigation process. So, you know, and the EPA and DEP and the county, as this came up in the context of the Orleans discussion, when they did their own town sponsor peer review, have all said that we are satisfied that the methodology is an appropriate tool for management. It's not perfect, no model is, but it is more than adequate, way more than adequate, to allow this work to continue. So, I, you know, I feel quite strongly that to reopen the discussion about the merits of the technological approach and the modeling would be an enormous mistake on the county's part. I think it sort of feeds fans of flames of something that has largely died out. And I think that there are people out there who will continue to say the science is junk. There will always be people out there who say the science about X is garbage, partly because they believe it and more likely because they don't want to take the action that the science dictates that they take in order to remediate the problem that was being studied. So, you will never make it go away. You can have NAS do it, and if NAS comes out and says it's fine, then they'll want somebody else to do it. And then they'll want somebody else to do that. And so, you know, I think the best way to address this issue frankly is rather than send it out for another review is, I think, you know, I think the towns need to begin to say this, that, you know, this stuff has been reviewed. Not like it hasn't been reviewed. And, you know, at some point, the perfect becomes the enemy of the good in something like this, and you will study something to death and never do anything. And towns need to stand up and say, you know, that there's, you know, that people without marine science backgrounds continuing to raise questions about complex marine sciences models and say they don't make sense to them, well, there's reasons for that. And that doesn't warrant going back and reopening the can of worms again on something that's settled. So, that's my opinion.
Well, in their letter.
Yeah.
They say this. "Orleans, like many other towns, is having difficulty achieving consensus within the community regarding our waste water management efforts."
Yep.
Not planned, but efforts.
Yes.
"In part due to questions regarding the perceived validity of the MEP methodology and implementation." I guess, how does a Board of Selectmen arrive at that conclusion that it's the science that is impeding their ability to reach any kind of consensus in their waste water planning?
Well, I think, you know, and I'll, let me just give you a little, you know, for Gussie, because she was into it more, way more than I was. You know, Orleans raised these questions early on. And despite being told by the state and federal agencies and county that the modeling was appropriate, chose to, then, I don't know, $50,000 of your own money?
That's correct. They took it out of the regular waste water planning that was already committed to engineering fees and proceeding with the EPA, and they diverted it to this new committee.
Right. And so, they set up a committee and they hired a third-party consultant to review the modeling approach, spent a lot of time, burned a lot of people's energy and brain cells doing it. And I will say that there's a lot of editorializing I could do, but there's nothing in the conclusions of that report that say anything about the UMass model not being an appropriate management tool. So, Orleans has been down that road. And at some point, frankly, having gone through that process and taken the better part of two years to do it and sponsoring, as a result, a lot of questions in other selectmen's minds where none existed prior to this issue being raised and coming up with nothing. I think that rather than say, hey, there continue to be questions, the Board of Selectmen needs to say, we looked at it, and we know not everybody's happy with the answer, but we looked at it and nothing came of that look. So, you know, we don't consider this to be an issue anymore. And I frankly think sending a letter of that sort actually exacerbates the problem as opposed to, because now the Board of Selectmen's on record again saying they have questions and problems with the science.
Now, what about other towns? What other towns? Do we know of any other towns?
That are questioning the science?
That to the point where they would want to push for a peer review?
You know, I don't, I have not heard, I have not gotten a request, and you need to just be careful about this. I don't have, I don't believe that I've ever gotten a request from another town Board of Selectmen formally requesting a peer, an additional peer review of the UMass model. I've had people tell me, you know, we wish we got it sooner. We know there are issues with it. We wish we could get the data.
But we don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet.
Right.
But, you know, I frankly haven't had other boards express the junk science perspective that continues to come out of Orleans.
Well, I know in Falmouth with the Comprehensive Review Committee, at one of their meetings, they discussed the science. And there's a couple engineers on that committee and a couple of scientists. But while they may have certain questions about it and say, yes, maybe some further study would be helpful, they have not determined that they should not go forward and use the science.
Right. I mean, the draft study, the draft report of the Orleans Peer Review Group had a statement in it which did not survive to the final that said, in effect, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the UMass model was perfectly appropriate for use as a management tool by Cape Towns.
And that consultant was the Woods Hall Group. And the group, the quote...
David Arbrick, that group?
No. Bob Hamilton was the quarterback for that.
And John Teal.
And John Teal, yeah. And the committee that was appointed to do the quote, "peer review," actually went to the contractor and said, "Take that out." That we don't want your opinion. It's beyond the scope of services. And not only that, this is the draft you presented, strike this, strike this, strike this, strike this. And it was...
I'm having a problem with hiring a peer review and then rejecting the opinion in the peer review. Because I thought a peer review, is my understanding of the definition of it, was to seek the opinion of a, you know, of another group in order to either verify or to negate the, you know, the original study.
The conclusion of the consultant didn't match the predetermined view of the committee sponsoring the work, and therefore, it was changed.
Anecdotally, I spoke before the National Society of Professional Engineers within the last couple of weeks. And the biggest problem that they, you know, that they reported on the things that they do is the acceptance of their findings by groups that are outside of the discipline that, you know, that they're, that they have essentially signed off on. And they were suggesting or trying to find out how you can get past the rational part of what they're presenting and get it accepted by what would be the personal interest of particular groups, you know, within the community. And all of them, when, you know, when I polled them, I think out of the 15, I think it was about 20 there, 15 of them are in towns that have town meeting. And they all fear going to town meeting because of the emotional content, you know, that occurs at that time.
Right. There's a legitimate set of questions that you raised. And that's, you know, I think a lot of this has to do with a lot of reasons other than the validity of the science. And, you know, people don't want to spend the money. People don't want to see the disruption in the community. They don't want to become a steward community, if you will, for whatever reasons they think that to be the case. And so, you look for the weak points. And one of the weak points is perceived to be the science. And so, people have gravitated to that and continue to make an issue out of it. You know, and there's two strategic ways to go. You can say, okay, we'll answer this set of questions. And then we'll answer the next set of questions. And you'll be doing that till you're blue in the face, is my opinion. Or you can say, as we have to date, you know, the people with experience and qualification in this field have looked at this, and it's been reviewed administratively, it's been reviewed judicially, and it's good enough. In fact, it's a lot better than good enough. And that's what we're going to use. And part of my answer frankly that I recommend back to Orleans is no, the county is not going to sponsor a new review. Yes, we think it's adequate science. It can always be improved, but given that everybody's phasing programs in over time, there'll be a period of time in which you can, you know, plan, do, check, and act, you know, act and check, and then recalibrate. And if you as a town don't want to use the UMass work as the basis for your waste water plan, don't. No one compels you to.
But the state?
Huh?
Doesn't the state?
The state is.
Yeah.
The state is. But, you know, you are, as an individual actor, as a municipality, never under any obligation whatsoever to use the results of the Estuary Project work for anything. It was an attempt by the state and a partner with the county and various other entities to provide administrative efficiency, lower costs, and a consistent methodology to participating towns. No town has to use it. So, if they want to do their waste water plan based on some other methodology and approach, have at it.
That they want to pay for.
That they want to pay for, and then have that subjected to the scrutiny that they're suggesting has not yet been applied to the Estuary Project when that goes for MIPA review, DRI review at the commission, and then through the DEP process. And they can do that. And I'd say good luck to them.
Yeah, one of the rules was when you got, when your town became a partner in the Massachusetts Estuary Project is you were signing on to a team that was going to play a certain game by certain rules, and that guaranteed you the right and access to approval and streamlining and help from all the other associated organizations. Now, if you wanted to still play a game and have 12 innings and two outs and use, bat this long, knock your socks off and go do it, but you've got to correct the water. And we entered knowing full well that this was the game and these were the benefits we had. And now we're at the 11th hour and we don't have a ground swell of, we passed our, we were one of the few town, okay, putting my audience hat on. We were the only towns that took our comprehensive waste water management plan to town meeting and got overwhelming voice approval. And then there were those who say, oh my God, the train is running down the track. How do we stop it? And this was the logical way to stop it. If it wasn't this, it would be something else. You saw what happened at Chatham.
I saw what happened at a wake I went to too. Except one of those performances that you're talking about, the wake that I was at.
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, it's taken on, you're, what we need now is to move forward. We need leadership, we need to move forward. We've done, due diligence, we did it. And I think it's time to say, this is acceptable.
See, I think that's a good point here because you have, you have, you have the data. And say it says that you, there's 100% nitrogen in a particular watershed or whatever. And what you're going to do is that you're going to determine what benchmark you want to reduce the nitrogen, whether it's five or three or zero. And then you're going to develop a plan to accomplish that. Then you're going to have a method by which you're going to study the effect of that plan. And that's going to give you the more relevant information than what you have to start with, because it's what you end up with that's more important than what you're starting, seems to me.
Right.
And so, that's why I don't think that questioning all this data at this point is quite so necessary as it is to get the plan in place and to begin to treat it and then look at the results of that treatment, which I would think...
I find myself strongly in favor of what has been suggested in this meeting. And I'd like to suggest that we ask Gussie and Andrew to frame a letter that basically summarizes that opinion for our signature that we could send back as an acknowledgement of, you know, for, you know, as our response to the town of Orleans.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that if we put in the fact that this was a, in a sense, a contract that everybody entered into, the benefits you got, we're not having to pay for all of this, and you were going to go ahead. And there was a peer review done on the information already. Really, the selectmen are under pressure from the constituents. They feel in a box and they're, and they're putting it over to us. But a lot of people want to kick this down the road for, I mean, we're putting on a tremendous burden to our future generations already. And this is just another added responsibility people don't want to live up to.
But the other piece is, let's say we were to agree to something like that, that would force the towns that are really moving forward on this to have to delay.
Yeah, put a big stick in their spokes.
And maybe another year, another two years.
Because people are going to get up at town meeting and say, hey, how come you're using this when the county doesn't have the confidence in it and is doing a peer review? Let's stop.
Exactly.
And you know, it doesn't take the heart, it doesn't take much to get to 1/3 plus 1 at a town meeting.
Everything would come from a grinding hole.
And then you're done.
And that would be, that would be, I think, the far worse outcome.
Right. So, I think your choice, I think your choice is to say, no, stand up, and I'm glad, gratified to hear that that's where you want to be on this. Stand up and say, no, this is good enough. We think it's fully appropriate and it should move on. If one town wants to peel off and go down a side road to hire somebody who'll tell them what they want to hear.
They want to take over.
They can go do that. And frankly, I'd rather lose one town than end it in all 15, which is what doing...
Right. And they can propose that at their town meeting at the cost of what that's going to be and...
It would compel us all to be under order by the DEP.
You'd immediately be under order, and then that totally takes you out of the ability to get the zero interest.
Right. I mean, the other thing is remember, and it's a good point, is that the, regardless of what any particular town chooses to use as the basis for its planning, DP and EPA are still using these numbers as the basis for the TMDL. So, the mandatory obligation is going to stem from these numbers, whether you want to use them for your planning or not. So, you know, and Gussie's right. If you, you know, you come up with a methodology that gives you the answer you want, which is, I don't have to do that much, and it doesn't jive with what the TMDL says, and you get an administrative order, then not only have you cost yourself time, you've then kicked yourself out of eligibility for zero interest money, and then you can go to town meeting and explain to them why you got a judicial order that says you got to build this thing, and because you get a judicial order and an administrative order by the state, you're going to do it at 2%, not at 0, and it's going to cost you a few million dollars extra.
The other thing is...
Not a good plan.
The other thing is, the longer they wait, the bigger the problem.
The bigger the price tag.
So, yeah, the bigger the price tag. So, now they may find that the numbers that were put forward are, and that were acceptable. They wish that they could have done that now, exactly.
I'm happy to draft up a letter and send it to you.
But the serious negative impacts on the entire Cape Cod community would be huge if we were to do that. Costly and...
Yeah. We mustn't throw away millions of dollars that are in the works.
The work of other communities. And that would be absolutely and totally unfair to them.
I had the benefit of seeing the letter. I've heard a lot about it. Who is, no, just who is copied?
The world.
Because...
Jean McCormick, Lori Burt, Paula Zwicki, all Cape Town's Boards of Selectmen, Senator Leary, Representative Sarah Peake, Senators John Kerry, Scott Brown, and Congressman Donald.
I strongly urge you to share your opinion with the individuals who were copied, because I think it might be a first leadership position that needs to be taken up front of the box and a certain priority.
Absolutely right. Everyone, all those people.
Oh, yeah, everybody who got it.
She receives the response.
Yeah, she gets the response.
Definitely, yeah.
And I will say that the county has invested time, energy, and treasure in moving the waste water program forward. We have been at this for a long time, and anything that impedes the progress of that interferes with what we're trying to do, which is to save the community, to maintain the value of this community, which is the, you know, which is what all of the development, all the economic development and environmental protection is based on.
And, you know, in other towns, they're moving forward in different ways, you know, and at different speeds. And maybe the towns that are moving forward more quickly, like Chatham, which I think is, aren't they still moving forward?
They're in the selection.
They're sewers, they're doing up the streets, doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're sewers. So, they expect to have zero results or whatever they're, they're planning to get. But other towns, they may have, they may be far enough ahead before the Orleans group reaches consensus. So, and at that time, there may be some numbers that will be more helpful to them if that's what they want.
Right after the town meeting passed, our MIPA review got going, all our documents for EIR and EAP and sitting up in Boston, everything is sitting there. And the selectmen actually disbanded our committee and said that any further action, they would have to vote on whether they formally file this or not. So, everything is an absolute, complete standstill. And I'm sorry, the Orleans representative couldn't be here because I'm speaking as your representative. It was Sims McGrath, and he's out of the state. I think he would, could occur with me. I don't speak for him, but we've had enough conversations about this. And I think the action by the selectmen may have been one more thing to try to appease this group. But I agree with Andrew, these are not appeasable opinions, and they will never be changed.
Now, if when Orleans gets, when the Orleans Board gets this letter, do you think they'll feel good about it? Or do you think they'll wish that we had gone along with their requests?
Depends, which, individual.
Oh, by individual, yeah.
Well, it might be useful that when the letter goes out that, you know, that perhaps the Orleans representative or Gussie schedules themselves on the Orleans Selectmen's docket so that they'd be available to respond to it.
I mean, I'm happy to go to the meeting when I get this letter.
And, you know, I do believe that if the majority of voters were cluing in and actually considered the whole situation and heard the arguments that this has been going on for 10 years, I mean, maybe some people thread up their radar, they're doing all other things. So, this is what has happened. This is exactly the way you just explained. And that there's this group here that are holding that. I mean, I think that if they saw that there's a potential bigger cost on the other side of some people just not wanting to go forward for whatever their motivation may be, there would be another side of uproar that would, I think, overwhelm. I mean, I don't think this is the majority.
Well, whether it's the majority or not...
It's the vocal minority.
It's the vocal minority, but it's also, who are we going to, either we let the cake be destroyed or who do we put this on the backside?
Well, it doesn't take many people to stop the project.
No kidding?
Yeah. I mean, look what happened in Falmouth.
What happened in Falmouth?
We voted to send it to the state and never sent it because of all the reaction.
Yeah.
And now the committee is working doggedly and forcefully, I think, to try to resolve it with the public forums, and there seems to be more acceptance.
Well, 10 years ago, you had to convince the average citizen that our water's in trouble and you had to do something. And then we've had this decade of a lot of dedicated people working and getting the science and getting ready. Now, we're in the political process, very clearly we're in the political process. And you don't have to convince people something's wrong with our water. You have to convince them what's the best way to do it. And you land that on top of an economic crisis.
Right.
And all you can do is feel a terrible pinch and go, oh my God, we can't afford this.
Right.
So, that's the thing that's complicating. And I think in another decade, we will have been through a majority of the political process, and people have moved forward and will come up with something else. It's just the nature of the...
And a bit of clarification though. They said, Paul and Howard, not with the waste water management, because our town meeting in Howard has consistently supported funding and investigation of this. And we are making progress, you know, in my town. And town meeting consistently has, you know, has supported, you know, progress in that area. But there are other areas where you see the, you know, where an organized minority can indeed stop things by --
The tyranny of the minority.
All right, so I'll send in a letter. I don't know how you --
Okay, we should vote on this, so we should --
You should craft it. Send it to me. I'll get them to review it if they're okay with it. We'll get them to sign it by next week if that's all right.
Yeah, I forget what they asked for a response about certain data. I forget what it was.
I can tell you, I might see John Kelly tomorrow at the Town Administrators, you know, monthly.
Give him a heads up.
I will tell him.
They would appreciate a response by June 16.
Couldn't have expected any other answer.
Perhaps we could send an acknowledgement right now that we're, you know, we're going to be sending a letter to follow it.
Well, Mark is going to see him tomorrow, so you could tell him.
I might see John Kelly tomorrow.
Well, the 16 is a week from today.
Yeah.
So you can let him know that a --
Yeah, I'll get you a letter in a day.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Tell them Andrew wants to come if they want.
I'll send it through Mark.
What you can do is, you can authorize me to sign it if you want. You can do that. As soon as he gets it to you, you guys approve it, I can sign it.
That's fine. I think that's, I go with that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
I'll move that, you know, that we caused this letter to be drafted, that states our position such as we discussed today, and have it, and authorize Mark to review it, sign it, and send it out as soon as Andrew --
Send it to us so we can at least read it first, and then he can.
Okay, well, the sense of it would be that we would, you know, be involved in the process.
Yeah, authorize that the letter.
Nevertheless, we would do everything we could to expedite the process of getting it out to respond to it.
That's a second question.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, not opposed, we're in favor.
Should I say politely decline?
Obviously polite.
That's right. It's nice to be nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, yeah. Helping us reach the right decision, huh?
Yeah. Won't be the last time you hear about it.
No, it won't be.
I can write this down as due information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy, go see. Yes, I'll be there. I'm sorry, I didn't send it.
Do you have a call or --
She's in Harwich.
Not tomorrow.
No, we've got a reference tomorrow.
That's at --
11:30 tomorrow, but we're supposed to go to the Selectmen Association meeting.
I'll be there.
That's Friday.
No, it's Thursday.
It's Friday. June 11th at noon.
I thought it was June 12.
At the Hyannis Golf Club.
I thought it was tomorrow, too. I haven't on my calendar for tomorrow.
Yeah, I have it in my calendar, but June 12.
And they're always Friday.
They have it on mine. They're always on Friday.
It's 11. It's 11.
I have mine for Friday, the 11th.
I have mine to, well, let me go.
I know, I have it on for tomorrow, too, and I know a couple of people that do for tomorrow.
You do?
The Selectmen Association.
Yeah, usually that's Friday.
It usually is.
But they're having a lunch, and they wanted extra money for it.
And it's Hyannis Golf Club.
I don't even know if I respond.
Maybe they're having a special --
No, wait a minute. At the Radisson.
It is at the Radisson.
Yeah.
Hyannis Golf Club.
Here's a --
Now it's at the Radisson? What? Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Who do we call?
The Rotary Club.
Wait, call Diane Cooney.
The Rotary Club meets at the Hyannis Golf Club at noon tomorrow.
Oh, they do? Well, then it can, oh. Well.
Here it is. CSA, Thursday, June 10th at the Radisson Hotel.
Really?
That's what it says. Yeah.
I didn't send a response. It's at 12 or something.
Thursday, the 10th?
Thursday, the 10th, tomorrow at 11:30.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's right there.
Is it a special meeting or is it?
It says Governor, the Governor at noon.
And who's that from?
That's from Diane Cooney.
Well, that's got to be right, then. Gee, good thing you mentioned it. Why do I? And where is it? Is it the Radisson?
It's at the Radisson Hotel.
Well, then what's Friday at noon at the Hyannis Golf Club?
You know, there is something Friday at noon at the Golf Club.
There is.
Oh, let me take a look. Maybe I have it online.
I have.
Because there is something.
Okay, see, Meet the Governor Patrick will be on June 10th, 11:30.
Thursday, June 10th at 11:30?
11:30. And prom start, it's going to cost you 10 bucks more. No schedule staff. They have an annual election tomorrow. And then 12 to 1 is when the governor's supposed to be there.
And where is it? It's at the Radisson?
At the Radisson on Ino Road. That's the one that's next to Pufferbelly's entrance.
Did you respond?
I responded, yeah.
Did you respond?
It's at 11:30, huh?
Would you respond for me while you're on that?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you get your reimbursement?
Yes, I didn't. Thank you.
That wasn't efficient. That was just a --
That was very good. No, I appreciate that.
Okay, so it's tomorrow, so it's not Friday. Where do you know? So what in the world is at 11:30 on June 11th?
I'm going to find out. There is something.
Oh, wait a minute, you know.
I hope you don't keep your shared calendar like that. Something at 11:30.
It's, oh, no, that's not it. I don't know, there was going to be something. Maybe that was the original place it was going to be.
Are you telling me to go?
Maybe that was the original.
Yeah, maybe they originally thought it was going to be there, and then with the governor coming and everything else.
That's funny. I have, yeah, I do have, that's strange.
Maybe it was you that told me it was the Hyannis Golf Club. I remember somebody telling me something was there.
I, I, B.C., I have B.C.C.A. Hyannis Golf Club. Hello. Well, I'm glad we know now it's tomorrow.
Yeah, because I changed a couple of schedules that I had on now.
Really? Wow.
Wasn't the Children's Cove, was the Cove Golf Tournament at the Hyannis Golf Club?
I don't know, but there's something at the Hyannis Golf Club.
Now that you say that, I set up a paper.
Maybe, that was last Monday.
I know. There's something across my desk.
I was going to go to the dinner at least.
Well, I have the whole stack of things. I'll have to check it out.
Okay.
Do we have, Mark, do you have?
I have two other things Bill brought to my attention. There is, we got from the GSA Government Services Administration, notice of availability is what it's called, and we get these periodically. It's about the Cleveland Ledge Light, which is a light in Buggs Bay.
I used to listen to it every night.
Born. While they're giving it away, if you're interested.
They're giving it away?
Yeah, they don't want it.
Could you repeat it?
The Cleveland Ledge Light.
You can take a look at it. The Cleveland Ledge Light. This is one of those, you know, public entities have the kind of right of first refusal when they're putting surplus property on the market, and the federal government is no different than any other.
Lighthouse keeper, you could be that, Jim.
So I assume you don't want us to express interest in that.
Unless you wanted to be a lighthouse keeper.
Well, there used to be a lighthouse keeper out there, because you used to see the boat tied up years ago around it. That was a long time ago.
You know, I assume the town born got it as well.
Well, we don't, we don't know for sure.
So there's that.
What could we do with it? Could we make money on it?
You wanted to be a lighthouse keeper.
We would spend money on it. That's what we would do, yeah.
I know that we'd spend money on it, but could we make money on it? Well, didn't they still run to California years ago? Now they brought it back.
They wouldn't have given it away for nothing.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
We find that whenever they've made this office and we've looked into it, because Lance used to love to look into these things.
Could you put it tall?
We find these mold factories, you know, we find these mold factories that, you know, that have significant issues with asbestos and lead paint. And we're given this opportunity to, you know, to put it back into the --
It's a beautiful lighthouse.
Yes, it is.
They're all beautiful.
It has a nice sound, too.
Does it?
Yes.
So it's very soothing. If a, oh, it's a really nice soft bell. It's one of those.
Well, the horn is the best.
I bet it is.
I think it violates the ambient noise standard.
50 dB.
Yeah, now that Falmouth just put in a place because of the wind, hey. You know, the chief, the chief of Falmouth made me very famous with his road program. I got a call from the Boston Herald on a week ago, a week ago Sunday, asking about it, one of the reporters.
About?
About the --
Ambient noise?
About the quiet roads. Yeah, no, not ambient noise, quiet roads, the stereos and the mufflers or the lack of mufflers on motorcycles. So I gave this great response to the reporter, which she wrote up very nicely in the Herald. And I got two or three phone calls about it from people not just in Falmouth. And I got some letters from people who included the clipping in the letters saying this was just a wonderful program. And somebody told me that Howie Carr picked it up on his radio show and referred to that woman in Falmouth.
That woman in Falmouth.
Supportive, supportive to the program, yes. So I haven't --
Howie Carr supported you?
Yes, Howie Carr.
Write that down. I mean, you're, you're, write down the date.
He must not have known you were a public servant.
Yeah, or a Democrat.
Yeah.
Somebody at the convention on Saturday told me that. Oh, didn't you hear Howie Carr? And I'm like, no, I didn't.
People at that convention, listen to Howie Carr?
Well, he really likes it, he says. And I said, well, that's good. Anyway, all right, do we have any other business?
I just have one other thing I wanted to mention. And one of the other things we got at the MACRA's Annual Conference was an excellent presentation on the Healthcare Reform Act. And I want to just bring a couple of things to your attention that will impact, you know, people directly here. One of the things, there's some tax provisions in there. One, in your flexible spending account, which we have people put in place if they choose, you're not going to be allowed any more reimbursement of over the counter medications, except for insulin in your flexible spending account. That will happen for the first tax year after this calendar year, so in 2011, we won't be able to do that. And the second thing, under the flexible spending account, it's going to limit the annual contribution to $2,500 for medical benefits. So that's, those are two, right now, we have a $5,000 limit. There is no federal limit. The employer may establish a limit if they so choose, so. And one of the other things, you know, there will be in 2018, a Cadillac tax on so-called Cadillac plans. The rates for those are established where the tax kicks in at $10,200 for an individual plan, or $27,500 for a family plan for the total plan cost. But keep in mind, those are the numbers for 2018. And one of the presenters was saying, if you take some of the healthcare plans and their current prices, and you build in 5% to 10% inflation factor over the next, basically, eight years, it's very likely you're going to be approaching those two numbers in terms of the Cadillac tax plan.
Healthcare costs, insurance.
So you'd be, it's some of some significant tax implications, so. So those are just some things to keep in mind on the healthcare reform.
That would affect practically all of our employees.
It could, you know, unless they change those numbers or, yeah, there may be some significant impacts.
Well, what can we, what, since we're supposed to look out not only for our own people, but for other people in the community, is that when you talk to this municipal health group, I think you ought to explore how we can advise people to contact whoever writes this legislation to make the appropriate change to protect ordinary working people who have plans that, you know, that cover their needs.
Well, you know, obviously, your congressman, this is all federal law, but congressmen and senators, federal senators. I would say, Bill, though, that actually we are doing fairly well with Cape, through the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group in a couple of areas. One, wellness, we have some significant wellness programs that are really managed by the county that we do for the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. So you're trying to prevent people from getting sick and incurring medical costs. That's a key piece. But also, we're implementing, as you know, some of these new RateSaver plans, and many of the units in the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group are implementing some of these RateSaver plans, which hopefully save costs, medical costs for the employer over the, and for the employee over the --
Well, and I know that when you had brought this up, and perhaps we should suggest it to people watching to talk to their own employers, that when you brought up that opportunity to participate in a RateSaver plan, I know that, you know, that Barb and I did sign up for, you know, for one of them, because it does represent a savings for both of us, for both, you know, for both the county and for ourselves as far as the coverage and insurance.
Who is the municipal healthcare plan limited to?